Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for January the 19th, 2023. It is 7:03 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First, we're going to call the goals starting on my right.
Dominic Smiglino, alternate.
Dominic Bonicio, alternate.
Ryan Condon, Commissioner.
Leanne Brozzi, Commissioner.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
We don't need to see anyone tonight, or just we know we'll be here. He should be here shortly, but then don't see anybody. All right. So next on the agenda is general public participation. This is the time when anybody can speak to the Commission on any matter that's not before the Commission. Right now, if there's anyone here that would like to speak, please identify yourself, come up to the microphone, and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Jason Dubak. I'm 231 Route 8 in Searsburg, Vermont. I'm an legal heir to John and Elsie Dubak of 373 Spring Hill Road. I'm here to express my questions and concerns regarding the Spring Hill Road closure. I was denied the opportunity to be put on the agenda, so my concerns are specifically the YouTube video of Monroe, Connecticut Planning and Zoning Meeting from July 7th to 2022. The first knowledge I had of this was last week, January 10th, 2023, when a friend forwarded me the article about the road closure from the Monroe side. I'm disappointed I wasn't contacted in this process. I haven't told this is a town attorney, Ben Marino's legal opinion, that all the others were properly contacted. I disagree. On record is my sister, Suellen Dubak's handwritten note that says, "We are in support of the Spring Hill Road disconnect." That was entered November 2nd of 2022. Can I give this to the board?
Yes, I'll take it from there.
I have no... But yet, the town of Monroe sent this out, certified notification, December 6th, 2022, to my long-dead parents. It was never signed. And it was entered January 13th, 2023, still unsigned. I believe this was an unprofessional futile attempt to contact the bare minimum of living people in order to rezone a property. This is still my opinion. Now, actual facts. The planning and zoning meeting on July 7th, 2022. I'd like to let the board know that you were not presented all of the facts or truths and were actually misinformed. Minute mark 110, quote, "Never got connected to Route 111 as a through road," end quote, end quote. And this commission down the road never saw that to be needed, end quote. That was from Mr. Schultz. In the past, I believe about 1993, the road was disconnected from Route 111, and the dead end was installed, with Spring Hill Road reconnecting to 111 in a different area, with the traffic light added on Route 111. Would the board have recommended this part of Spring Hill Road to be discontinued for the second time had they known this? This property had approximately 150 feet of road frontage and a dead end close nearby. Due to this road closure, it will now be an interior lot, way less desirable and heavily developed. I invite it for fairness and transparency. This process was started with a misinformed board. Please review and fact-check this. Please rescind your referral, which was needed and relied. And at the least, start the informative process again. And while I'm on record, I would like to be added to the agenda for this Monday's Town Council meeting to address other reasons of misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubak. Is there any else, anyone else here tonight that would like to speak to the Commission on any matter that's not...
Can I speak? I'm hard to hear him, so I can't hear what's going on. I forgot the damn hearing. Can I speak?
Yes, just name and address for the record.
Okay. Tom Arnold, 162 Pepper Street. And this is written in regard to the recycling plant that will be likely put up at the end of the industrial end of Pepper Street, but...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have a pending...
Residential end.
We have an active hearing. We cannot entertain that. It's got to be at the public hearing.
I don't know what you all say.
Well, what he's saying is that when we have a public hearing, you need to come to the public hearing and speak at that time.
Oh, I thought this was...
No, they canceled it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was on the agenda.
On the website.
But they canceled it. They asked for...
Okay. Well, I'm sorry to take your time. I'll catch you later.
But it looks like when's it going to be on?
Sir?
Sir?
Hold on. When is the meeting back on? They're finalizing the plans. We're anticipating the first meeting in February, which would be February...
On next meeting.
Is that our...
No, the first week of February?
Yeah, does anybody have a count? Is that the second?
February 2nd.
February 2nd.
Hey, thanks for speaking up.
Yeah, Tom, I will, I'll give you a call to...
Oh, thank you. I'll try and remember my hearings.
Okay. Good night.
You, too. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Are there any other people here tonight that would like to speak to the Commission? Please raise your hands. Is there anyone online that would like to speak to the Commission during general public participation? If there are, please raise your hand. Anyone here or online saying none will move on to the first public hearing. That's EFP 2022-03 filed 125 Gardner Road. I have a grant of extension and hearing continuance from Solian Engineering for 125 Gardner Road. They would like to continue until February 2nd.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a motion in a second for those two? So we have that for the record?
All right. To accept it, they'll entertain a motion to accept the extension for 125 Gardner Road.
I'll make a motion to extend 125 Gardner Road hearing until February.
All right, we have a motion. Second, have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. That's passed unanimously. The second public hearing is SCP 2022-02, file number 1648A, 467 and 485 Pepper Street. We also have a grant of extension and hearing continuance from Solian Engineering representing the applicant on this as well. They're requesting that we rehear them on the 2nd of February, 2023. So they'll entertain a motion to accept the extension hearing for 467 and 485 Pepper Street.
I'll make a motion to accept the extension of hearing for 467 and 485 Pepper Street until our February meeting.
Second, a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's have it. We have unanimous on both of those. Third public hearing tonight is SCP 2023-01, file number 164984 and 7180 Main Street. Mr. Condon, do you have any public...
Yes, notice of public hearing in accordance with CGS 8-70, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, January 19th, 7:00 p.m., or soon thereafter via hybrids and meeting and in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. SCP 2023-01, file number 1649A, 4 and 7180 Main Street, special exception permit application for proposed mixed-use development. Portion of development is within the town of Trumbull, retail and apartments located at 4 and 7180 Main Street, B1 district with MBB overlay district. Accessors map 4, Lot 38, owner applicant 7182 Main Street LLC. Notice was published twice, once on January 6th in the Connecticut Post and once on January 11th in Voices.
Thank you. Mr. Condon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have Exhibits 1, which is the application set and plans. Exhibit number 2, Health Department comments. Exhibit number 3, Architecture Review Board recommendation. Number 4, Conservation Commission comments. Number 5, a copy of the P O C D, page 65. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And for the applicant, we have...
Chairman, Commissioners, good to be before you tonight. Chris Rousseau with Russo and Rizio LLC, offices at 10 Saskel Hill Road in Fairfield. Again, here on behalf of the applicant for this development. I'm very excited to be before you tonight, to be able to present this. This is a very long time in making. I think when I first started this property, working with this property, I didn't have any kids, and now I have three. So it has been some years working on this, and I want to thank the Commission, the staff, everyone who, you know, this, again, it's been a long process. We have worked with Bridgeport WPCA, Trumbull WPCA, Trumbull Wetlands, Monroe Wetlands, Trumbull P&amp;Z, Monroe P&amp;Z. There's been a lot of people involved to get to this point for a property that is very important because it's the gateway into Monroe. So it deserves that care, and it's one of the reasons why we're following the gateway in progress. And we appreciate everyone's time to be, and that everyone has taken, to be able to come forward with this application to make this development a reality. Just so you know, with me tonight, we have Jason Edwards with Edwards Associates, who was our engineer, Peter Amara, who was our architect, Steve Sipola, who should be on Zoom. He prepared our traffic report, Hunt Sherman, who was one of the developers, and then Matt Pop, who I think is also on Zoom, to our landscape plan. So hopefully have everybody here to be able to answer your questions tonight. So getting into the site, I just wanted to start with kind of an overhead view of what we're proposing, and then I'll have each of our experts, our consultants, come up and describe their work and what we're proposing tonight. But this site is a site that I'm sure you've all driven by thousands of times, that is, again, a gateway into Monroe, and that's because it actually starts at the very beginning of Monroe. It is a site that is split between two towns. You can see that split, the dark black line that I'm highlighting there, that is the dividing line between Trumbull and Monroe. So this site is split between those two towns, and I'll, there'll be parts of the application I'll talk about what parts in what and what parts in the other town. The site itself as a whole is just under seven acres. A good portion of it, if you know it from some years ago, sat down grade from Main Street. We have worked in the past few years in accordance with approvals to raise the grade of this site, so to get to the end result, which you'll see in Jason Edwards will describe. The site's located within the commercial B1 zone. This zone now permits residential apartments for rent above commercial uses, be a special exception permit per permit, when said use is proposed on a lot with direct street frontage and access via Main Street, which is what we have here tonight and what we're proposing, along with the retail and office use that is permitted in the commercial B1 zone. The site itself is surrounded. Royal Group Fuels is to the, is to the south. To the rear is a large area that is mostly composed of wetlands, and then there is what's essentially a big supply just to the, to the north of us. It sits slightly north of the Spring Hill Road intersection. So the proposal is for a single mixed-use, it's an L-shaped building that could stay here towards the rear of the site. Again, building that is partially in Trumbull and then this portion above this dark white line in Monroe. Just to give you some numbers before, before we get into details of the plans, the proposal is for residential use with a total of 57 units on its upper floors. 21 of those units will be in Monroe. The breakdown is 17 one-bedrooms, two studios, and two two-bedrooms. And that's just the, just the Monroe side, that's 10% of the units being two bedrooms, which is in compliance with your regulations. There's a limit in your regulations that limits two bedrooms to 10%. We're in compliance with that. The other half of the residential is 36 units in Trumbull. Three of those are studio units, 29 are one-bedroom, and four two-bedroom. So overall, the skew is towards one-bedroom and studio units. In total, there's only six two-bedrooms on the entire site. That's pretty wild. In addition to this, you'll see it broken out when we get to the floor plans, there is an office and storage area that's proposed to be accessed from the rear of the site. Because of the grating, the front of this building sits at a higher grade than the rear of the building. Alongside the rear of the building, when it cuts to rear, you will come down in grade, and there'll be an entrance, an on-grade entrance back there into a office area and storage area. And then for the main ground floor portion of this, that would be where the retail is, that breakdown is 8,430 square feet in Monroe and then 12,786 square feet in Trumbull. The site's mainly, is mostly in Trumbull, so that's why, you know, as you can see it laid out, you can see how it's, size-wise, more of the building is in Trumbull. But that's the breakdown for the ground floor retail. The ground floor will also include the access to the upper residential floors with a lobby here in the center. As far as the parking layout, we're proposing 198 spaces. That number is fully compliant with both Monroe's regulations and Trumbull's regulations with the overwhelming number of the, of the spaces being located in this front area, which you can also see there's a parking area down here, a little further south. There is parking along the side of this building here, and then there's also spaces located in the rear in that, that area that I indicated is where is the entrance to the office. One of the great benefits, and I know this will be discussed more in depth later, with mixed use is the ability for shared parking. And if you look at the zoning data table that was submitted on these plans, you'll see that, that shared parking calculation is factored in. These two uses, residential and retail, really lend each other because of their hours and their peak hours, well towards shared parking. So the access clearly is just solely out onto Main Street, and we'll have our traffic expert here to guide that a bit. Just so you know where the site is with regards to approvals, again, it is two towns, so it's a little, it's, it's different than normal. We went to the Bridgeport WPCA for approval to tie into the sewer system, which we received, and then we went to the Trumbull WPCA and received approval for that for sewer connection. So this development will be connected to sewers. We have applied to Trumbull Wetlands, and we received approval from Trumbull. And we have submitted to Monroe Wetlands. That hearing is ongoing. One of the things, and I think Jason will probably speak to this as well, we are also, we had received a prior approval from Wetlands in 2019. Some of the work that you've seen going on at that site over the past couple of years is in accordance with a prior, that was approved for the site. And so now we are concurrently applying to Trumbull P&amp;Z, our, Trumbull P&amp;Z for this development, and then obviously, we're here before you, for your approval of the special exception permit. So that's just kind of an overhead of, of what we're proposing here tonight. At this time, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jason Edwards, who will go into the engineering and, and some of the site work.
For the record, Jason Edwards, J Edwards Associates, Engineers Surveyors, 717 Road in Easton. To start, just to continue on what Chris was just discussing, there is, or was approvals granted for excavation and fill permits on the site, I believe, in 2019. So this is basically the topic of that excavation and fill permit. You know, the granite work down, down in this area was all completed along excavation and fill permits. So now we're kind of to the final phase of that approval path. As Chris stated, the property is bisected by the town line, Trumbull and Monroe, which is the heavy black line down the middle. We have two, well, one, two-way, one proposed entrance to the site, which is a two-way in and out here at the center of the site. There's also a proposed exit-only, right-turn-only secondary exit on the north side of the property. In addition to those two curb cuts, we're also proposing, as recommended by the traffic engineer, a widening for a left-turn bypass on the far side of the property, far side of the roadway here. So we'd have an 800-foot-long, or 836-foot-long bypass lane, which is essentially, if you know Starbucks over Route 25, they have that area where you can turn left, but somebody can still get around you. That's what this is intended to be similar to. So it doesn't hold up traffic if someone's trying to turn in. So that continues up to about here, and then it tapers back in. Some guard rail has to be replaced. I think that is the only modification there, other than the actual pavement. So the grades, as Chris said, this building is two levels, I guess you could say, there's a lower level down in the rear, which is at roughly elevation 314. There's then driveways that travel up and down either side that bring the front upper elevation to 348. The first floor of this building is elevation 348, elevation at the roads approximately 334. So it's coming up to 348 where that exits. So we have a very different view of the site. It will not look like it's something that we've... We obviously have a large parking area up in front here that's getting tented door to the parking. There's also, as Chris noted, second parking areas around the sides, more drainage system to keep the pipe network, catch bases throughout the parking areas. Those are on the north side, all directed into a large stormwater retention system that overflows down into a hydrodynamic separator for a drainage cycle through a pipe discharge into a rip-rope outlet into the existing, down the bottom. We're also proposing a major access driveway, and that's what you see here down. That's a route path for major drainage infrastructure down to the bottom of the hill. We have provided a detailed storm erosion and sediment control plan. It's pretty standard of road patrol measures, everything in alignment with the guidelines of DEP. Property is going to be cleared by public sewers and water. The sewer main will be extended up 25. And this, this is going to be extended all the way up from Spring Hill Road, it'll come up along the, I guess, the east side of the roadway, and then a new manhole will be set in the shoulder here, and this will float gravity from the building to here. The lower level will require a force main to be pumped up to that manhole. Water will be serviced, there's an existing main in, in the roadway, so it's just a matter of adding a new, larger pad to that, that line connecting it in. We've got two dumpster locations identified here. There's one on the front upper level, then one in the rear lower level. We do have some standard screening details on those that we've utilized in the town This is our detail of our dumpster enclosure, concrete pad, I believe these are plastic fencing or ABC, galvanized hardware. It's fairly standard. Trash will be brought through the dumpsters via the maintenance, so they'll collect the garbage, bring it out to the dumpsters as needed. There's a variety of access points for them to get out to these dumpster sites, so they shouldn't have a problem with that. We've also provided a landscape plan. This was prepared by Environmental Land Solutions, the landscape architect, Matt Pop, who's available here. If there's any questions on this, or if you guys would like him to go through it, you can do so, but there's a significant number of trees and, you know, landscaping proposal on the street, as well as a detailed landscape buffer in the rear to protect the wetlands in the back. And I'll defer to Matt, if there's questions on this. And we also provided, Matt's office also, Environmental Land Solutions also provided the lighting plan with photoretro calculations, all dark-type compliant, and then the landscape plan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 100% native. That's something the Commission likes. I believe that's the end of what I have to present at this point. Would you guys like to have us take questions after each presenter, or just everyone? Do it all at the end, or...
Yeah, do it at the end.
Okay. So that's the storm. Peter.
So next one, Peter Amara, who did the design. For the record, my name is Peter Amara, with Amara Associates, a licensed architect in the state of Connecticut. My office is located in Middlebury, Connecticut. I'm going to talk about, obviously, the architecture. The building is a two-and-a-half-story building from Route 25, so when you're, this view you see right now on the screen is what you would see from Route 25. The first level, which is the ground level, as mentioned before, is all retail and restaurant, possibly, but the next two floors above that has... But the next two floors above that has apartments, as described. Jason did mention that if you go around the building and the grate does drop off in the Monroe side, there is a space for office and storage. The building is, is fairly large and what we wanted to do was break the massing up. And we started with a focal point. We call it the centerpiece or the tower of the facility, which is clad in brick and it has a peaked roof. And then the two end caps, which are at the flanking ends of the L, of each, each leg of the L, is also with the same fenestration, which is brick. And then the infill space that's in between is going to be more of a siding to lean a little bit more residential. The windows, it's a mix of the centerpiece, the center tower has apartments that are loft in style and the windows are taller in nature to represent more of a, you know, that studio feel. Whereas the infill spaces in between the brick areas are more of a traditional residential look with some double hung windows. The dormers on the upper level are to also break up the massing and have the building somewhat lean towards a residential feel as well. I mean, I'm not, there, there are some metal lines that you'll see on the left and right edges in the center to just provide a little bit of added protection. Any of the shoppers that would be at this facility would be able to walk underneath a covered colonnade as they went from establishment to establishment. As mentioned, the folks that live in the apartments would enter through key locations and utilize the stairs. And there's stair towers in the center and at the feedbacks, as well as an elevator in the center tower. In the rear, I want to go to the next slide here. There is a, you could see an outdoor terrace. It would probably be used if there's a restaurant or some use that would utilize a portion of that, that could be a possibility, but also for the apartment, the tenants of the apartments. And you can see how the grate sort of drops off. We're carrying the same theme around the retail mall. But, you know, have it look a little bit nicer than it would if it was, you know, some sort of a mafia block or something. I think you're all familiar with the floor plans. I don't know how much detail you want me to go through, but this is the basement level. So this is basically, the Monroe line is basically here. So everything from this line down is Monroe. So this is sort of office storage. And this is going to be utilities, mainly your mechanicals, et cetera. A little bit of storage. So this, this is basically what we're calling the ground level, level with Route 25. So this, you could see, right now, we're not sure exactly what tenants will be here, but it depends how many spaces. It's looking up right now, just as a placeholder at 12:11 with sort of the two flanking pens as like, we call them mini anchor spaces essentially. Elevator is right here in the center with a stair tower. And then the other two stair towers are here and here. There is a pass through here. The building is actually broken at this level. And I think that the purpose was to allow folks to get to this entrance and exit from this stair here, instead of having to go all the way around. These are a little bit hard to read. I think you may have prints in front of you. But this basically shows the first level apartments. And again, just to keep reiterating, this line here where my hand is moving from this here down is the Monroe line. And then the upper level is very similar. The apartments pretty much line up. These aren't as exciting, but these are the two dimensional elevations just showing each view like straight up. Same thing. These are some detailed cross sections that show the building's height and the floor to floor heights. There's a cut through the elevator, stair tower. And then, I don't know if, do you want me to talk about the signage? So essentially we're proposing, I guess you'd call this a monument sign or a pedestal sign out front. I believe this is in accordance with the regulations in terms of its height, size and finished materials, which in this case, you know, it's going to, we're going to pick up the brick theme as well as, this might be some sort of a metal panel. It's not 100% solid. The signs that will be on the actual building itself are shown here. I apologize that the mentions are not that legible, but we've combed through the regulations and these will all meet and comply with the regulations. Here we have the material board. So you can see we're going to, we're proposing a traditional red brick, sort of a colonial red brick for the two end caps in the center portion of the building. And then the infill areas will be just a nice natural clay colored clapboard siding. All the trim will probably be white with a traditional black asphalt roof. And then there's metal, black metal accents, as I mentioned, as canopy elements throughout. That's pretty much it. I'm going to go back to the main front rendering. And then I guess we can take questions. Thank you.
I can, we're, we have to give some more of the presentation, but Peter over here gave some questions at the end. One thing I did want to point out with the rest of the floor plans, and Peter mentioned it, but this, this is the basement level. There is a storage area here that you can see here. Then that, that would be for the tenants' use. So there's some extra storage for, for the, you know, folks room and apartments. And there's also, it's really thin on here so kids see, but there's also bike racks. So, you know, rather than storing it in your hallway in your apartment, you can store your bikes down there. And then those, I know Jason pointed this out, but those two stairwells that are shown are not in this plan. Those are in the vicinity of the dumpsters. So the, the tenants can easily get to, to each of those two dumpster locations on either end of these links right here. So I think that's better. Next, we have Hans Sherman, who will talk about, you prepared a fiscal impact study that you should have had with the submission about the fiscal impacts of the development.
Do you want to, it's 11 copies.
We answered that.
For the record, my name is Hans Sherman. I'm with Eight Serious Projects and I'm the project manager for the owner of 712 Main Street. What you're receiving is a summary of this document here, which is the impact document that was prepared by Stan Gestowski. Stan is starting his, I think adjunct professorship at Yale. Tonight was his first class. He said, I can miss any class except for the first one. So he apologizes, but he prepared this report and I just wanted to touch base on a couple of key points in, in this summary that, that he prepared. By the way, Peter, I like the term Monroe wing. I never thought of that, but so the Monroe wing is, is your, your dedication to it. What this summary chart shows is basically the fiscal impact of this project on the town of Monroe. Stan actually contacted the services of the town department of education to determine the cost per student. He determined that there is a potential for, based on other projects and other, whether it's one bedroom or two bedrooms, there's a potential for three school age children for this project. And at the cost of $18,344 per student, that would be the cost to the town as calculated by the Department of Education. He also contacted various services, police, fire, et cetera, to determine, again, with a project of this similar size and configuration, what the cost would be to the town and came up with a figure for those services as well. But there is, with the taxes that this project generates, there is a net revenue to the town of $132,961 per year. So we look at this as a very positive, not only a positive generator for the people of the town, but also a positive generator for the fiscal well-being of the town. And we propose that this project go ahead and we'll, I guess.
Do you have any questions or? Especially around that. Oh, it's all right, yes. And I'll just say the, the results of this, you know, the impact study, and it's really been a kind of a proof of the regulation. Because when this regulation was adopted by you, there was a lot of care to make sure that school age children, there would not be a lot of school age children here. So that was, you remember, there was the no three bedrooms allowed in this development, but then also the cap on the two bedrooms, which, you know, would possibly recapture three school age children. So, and again, there's only two two bedrooms in Monroe. There's four two bedrooms in Trumbull. So I think, which fired that study with three school age children is really the result, how this reg was crafted to minimize the impact on the town. With that, I believe Steve Sapola is on the line who put together the traffic study. So Steve, you're on. Do you want to take over and go through your report?
Yes, good evening. For the record, Steve Sapola, Senior Traffic Engineer for Hardeston Hanover. We conducted the traffic impact study. If I could just share my screen. I think I need permission to share.
Yes, you do, and I'm doing it.
We're getting it.
You should be also.
Okay, can you see my screen?
No.
Okay, let me try that again.
Where's the?
Here we go. Sorry about that.
Yeah, you're working now, thanks.
You can see it now, okay. For our traffic study, this is the figure one from the traffic study. Our traffic study looked at the four signalized intersections along the Route 45 corridor. We looked to the, north is to the, to the left of the screen, just for orientation purposes. We looked at the Judd Road, Purdy Hill Road signal. We looked at the Victoria Drive traffic signal. And then in the town of Trumbull, we looked at the Spring Hill Road and the Tasha Road traffic signals. In addition, we put a automatic traffic recorder along the site frontage, which captured not only volume, but also speed for the sightlines, which I'll get to as part of my presentation. For purposes of the presentation, I'm going to focus mostly on the, the two signalized intersections located in Monroe, as well as the side access drives. For our traffic study, we conducted traffic counts at all the intersections on Thursday, October 19th, as well as Saturday, October 22nd, 2022. The weekday counts were done from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. in the morning and during the weekday afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Our peak hours were 7:30 to 8:30 a.m., 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. And 10:15 to 11:15 a.m. on Saturday. Just for reference purposes, Route 20, Route 25 in the vicinity of the site carries approximately 1,850 cars during the weekday morning, 1,950 cars during the weekday afternoon, and on Saturday, 1,550 vehicles. And that's a two-way volume, northbound and southbound combined. We took our existing traffic volumes and projected them out to a design year of 2024, utilizing an annual growth rate of 1% per year, based on our discussions with the Connecticut Department of Transportation Planning Department, based on our discussions with both the Town of Monroe and Town of Trumbull Planning Departments, as well as the Connecticut Department of Transportation Planning Department. No other developments were identified. Let me go to my next slide here. Next, we determined estimated site traffic distribution patterns for the proposed site. We based it on current traffic patterns, as well as anticipated routes for patrons, as well as residents. Based on our analysis, we determined it would be a 50/50 split north and south on Route 25, with 5% coming from Judd Road, 5% coming from Purdy Hill Road, and the remaining 40% coming from north on State Route 25. Zoom in a little bit, zoom it a little bit better. Next, we, we estimated the, the site traffic for the proposed land juices. As, as was noted, there's a warehouse, general office space, retail, and then the residential. To estimate the site traffic, we use the IT, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, the latest edition, 11th edition, which in the manual, it has trip rates for many different uses based on actual traffic, traffic counts at similar facilities. As part of our site traffic estimates, Connecticut DOT allows for a 5% internal capture reduction, which accounts for internal, between the, the retail multifamily uses that would not be, you know, people coming from external. In addition, also Connecticut DOT allows a 20% pass by credit for the retail, which is a reduction for motorists who are already traveling on Route 25 who turn off of Route 25 to use the retail and then continue on to where they were going. So that traffic is already on 25, it's just being diverted into the site. Based on our site traffic estimates, the, the site in total is estimated to generate a total of 84 new trips during the weekday morning, 157 new trips in the weekday afternoon, and 130 trips during the Saturday midday peak hour. Based on the traffic volumes that I've just explained, we put those lines into a traffic analysis model called Syncro, where the, the volumes and all the inputs provides us with a capacity analysis. And based on that capacity analysis, we found that the state Route 25 at Judd Road, Purdy Hill Road intersection generally maintains these, the same level of services or have acceptable changes in level of service. Typically, anything from an A to, A to D is acceptable. Level of service E is getting to the point where there's a little congestion and level of service F obviously is failing. Based on the analysis, the southbound left turn, there was a change from a level service D to E during a no-bill condition. It was on the, the cusp of a level service E. And that's because at this traffic signal, the, the left turns are, are what we call protected only. So you can only make the left turn when there's the green arrow. When the, the through line is green, it, it, it has a red arrow for the left turn, so left turns are not permitted. And due to the long cycle lengths at these types of traffic signals, that these left turn movements typically operate at a level service Es and possibly Fs because of the long cycle length and the short amount of time that, that, that movement has a green, green time. Based on. This is the table six from the report. That level of service, even though it's a level service E, it functions well within, well, under capacity. And there's sufficient storage space for the, the vehicles that are stopped there. So we don't believe there's a concern with it, the change of level service D to E. And then the second intersection we looked at was the state Route twenty-five at Victoria Drive, which maintained acceptable level of service or acceptable increases in the, the level of service. In addition, we looked at the site access drive, which the, the, what we call the site access drive south is the full movement driveway. And the site ingress north is that, that norway driveway, that's a right turn exit only. Based on the analysis, exiting movements from the full movement driveway function at a level service F with extended delays. The, these longer ways are typical for left turn exiting movements for most signalized intersections along this corridor, generally due to the high through lines and limited gaps. The. At a level service B. The, and then that right turn exit only operates at level service Cs. Really, the only way to mitigate these Fs exiting would be the installation of a traffic signal, which we looked at the, the eight-hour warrants that are required by Connecticut DOT. And the amount of traff, the, the amount of traffic that this generates would not trigger the warrants for a traffic signal. And in addition to assist with this, with this driveway, as I believe Jason mentioned, we recommended a, the installation of a southbound left turn bypass lane, which most likely would be required by Connecticut DOT based on the level of traffic the site would be developed, would be generating. Then lastly, as I mentioned, we put a ATR, the little rubber tubes across the road in front of the site. And from that, we determined the, the speeds to be forty-seven miles per hour north and the eighty-fifth percentile speed to the south as forty-four. Based on the Connecticut DOT requirements for intersection site distance, they require five-nineteen to the left for both the main access drive and the right turn exit driveway. And to the right, four-eighty-six. And as you can see, we have more than sufficient intersection site distance for the proposed driveway. And that ends my presentation. I guess I'll pass it back to Chris.
Thanks, Steve. Just to put a, just to finalize a couple things with regards to our requirements under this application. We did submit an affordability plan. Ten percent of the units on this development are designated affordable as required for your regs and also Trumbull's regulations. So that plan is submitted for, again, ten percent of the units will be reserved as affordable at eighty percent of area median income as required. The other is, again, this is going, this, this application received approval from Trumbull Inland Wetlands. It is currently pending before Monroe Inland Wetlands. There is an environmental impact report from Stephen Dancer that was submitted with this application. And I won't go, you know, too in detail just to say that he found there, there would be no significant impacts to the wetlands, to this application, there's no work being proposed in the wetlands. And again, a lot of the part that was near the wetlands, the work that was near the wetlands was handled back in two thousand and nineteen and when, and when we received approval back then. So, so some of that site work is already commenced and a lot of it is done. The stabilization around the wetlands lot that, that has been completed. So. But he, we submitted this for the record in his opinion that there's no significant impacts to the wetlands from that development. Chair, that's basically it for the presentation. I was going to go through how we satisfied the standards for a special permit, but maybe I'll save that to first now go through questions that, that you may all have for, for our experts and then at the end come wrap it up with.
All right, that sounds good. Chris, let's, let's start with the commissioners. Start on my left.
Okay, what type of businesses are being targeted for the first floor?
Right now, it's, it's retail businesses. We don't have anybody signed up yet for us, so there is, there's no tenant signed on yet for the bonus. But right now, it's.
Retail, any medical office type. To be honest, I'm just with the record. Any type of retail and commercial tenant, we'd love to get like a medical office facility in their stores, whether they're local or national. It's a, a great flexible space and with a lot of, you heard the amount of cars that go by. So we're fairly confident that we will attract the good, stable retail tenants.
And right now, it's showing the plans, there's eleven units, but obviously there's the.
Ability.
Combine, yeah. And as far as the filling process, how much of that is left? Would you estimate between time and material?
Right now, we've done about twenty-five to thirty percent of the filling. So, you know, probably seventy-five percent left. We're waiting, we filled up to the bottom of the foundations. So once the foundations get done, we'll start filling the rest of the site. And then, you know, four feet below, you know, twenty-five does have a slope to it. So we're going four feet below sort of the center of the slope. We're really going to notice it. It's gonna almost seem like it's on, like, you know, the level of twenty-five.
And as far as the, the drains on here, if I'm correct here, you have two that are gra- or one that's gravity and one that's forced?
You're speaking of the sewage.
Sewer drain.
Yeah, there's, the upper level would be drained by gravity out to the front. And then there's also a pump force made that would have to be for the lower level to get up and get out to the existing sewer, well, new sewer.
Got it. And is there any plan or is a possibility to have bike path access from this unit?
Because the, the whole half of the property is wetlands and it does connect to the, you know, we're, yes, we are hoping to connect to the, to the trail. And.
It'd be tough to get bikes down twenty-five and, you know, you're.
It's not twenty-five, I mean, it's, we can, we can, there, there is the river there. But I, I believe there's also sort of a land bridge that goes to where the soccer field is.
Whatever you're pointing out, we can't see on the single.
I appreciate it.
You're not clear, boy.
Only see through what I can be.
Who, who do we want to do?
Just here.
I gotta get rid of Steve.
Now you got all Steve.
Cole can't listen to our meetings, man. Rick needs your help. Stop pushing buttons, brother, come on.
Steve, do you have the ability to make us host? Be TH.
You have the site plan part, it's in the bottom right. It's the rear southeastern portion.
Sometimes you have to release the hosting privilege.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm trying to see.
Jason, thank you for reminding me, you're absolutely right.
Do you know where that would be?
Hey, you want to just log off and log back in, man?
I, I, I could, I could log off and come back on.
Clean hosts, if you clean host.
See TH Chambers, can you right-click on that and make host?
Yeah, let me see. Oh, make host. How about now?
That's good, you don't have to log off, thank you.
You got it? Okay, thanks.
Okay, share. Thank you, Jason, for.
So the, the building is here, the, the entire back lot is, is wetlands. It's not all wetlands, there's some paths back here, but there is a sort of a bridge that goes into the adjacent property. We're hoping to talk to the, the neighbors to allow people to go in the back of the properties or through the properties to that bike path. It was diverted when Swiss Army built their headquarters to that side of the river. You know, it used to be sort of like, there used to be a rail spur on this side of the river. But the only way to get to that path now is to go through an adjacent property. But we do have bike racks inside for the tenants and we're hoping that there is a, there will be an exercise capability. It's a beautiful site, so.
Yeah, I think it would make it more attractive.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The last, so there's twenty-one units in Monroe. Besides studying, you know, the other developments, I'd like to know what type of metrics are used to determine the set amount of children that are estimated to live within this development?
That would be part of this report, which I believe you have a copy of this.
Yes.
And it was submitted, so I think the metrics are explained in, in, it's a hundred, two-hundred-page report of data, basically. So I don't have that answer.
Is it kind of boilerplate data or is it specific to the area?
It's specific to the area. If, if we look through the data, it's very specific to the area and they use metrics that they've used in other developments close by, in Trumbull and in, in Shelton. So they're, they're using the metrics that have been proven in the developments that recently.
We can get him to provide clarification to that specifically.
Yes.
He's not here tonight, I don't force him to speak to it, but we're trying to get an answer, a better answer for it.
Okay, thank you.
You're done?
You're up.
Good job, probably you. You said you're, you're projecting about three kids, three kids in the school system?
Yes.
How many two-bedroom apartments you have?
So there's two, two bedrooms in Monroe and there's four two-bedrooms in Trumbull.
So it's three in what school system?
Well, it would depend, I think that's looking overall at.
It was just in Monroe.
Oh, that was just Monroe, okay, so in Monroe, it would be three.
And only two two-bedroom?
Off of two two-bedrooms.
Okay.
And that was factored into the overall fiscal impacts of Monroe, which yielded one hundred and thirteen thousand in.
Yeah. They, they do take into account, they do take into account the studios, the one bedroom, and the two bedrooms, doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I didn't ask anything about money, just to be clear.
Yeah, I know, no, just, just to let you know, that was, that was, that was fact.
No, I'm just trying to figure out how you're going to get three kids and you only have two two-bedrooms. So at some point, you're thinking people are going to share rooms?
Yeah, I mean, and they tend to be conservative in their, in their analysis.
PS, oh, sorry, PSAC, that's, is that the school-aged children?
Yes.
That's where?
Right.
So the one-bedroom, seventeen one-bedroom units is where they're getting a two-point-two-seven school-aged kids from. The two-bedrooms are only getting a point-two-six school-aged child in there.
How do we put half a kid through school?
I don't know, but it's interesting that it's actually coming from the one-bedrooms.
Okay, I guess, all right. Doesn't make much sense to me, but that's cool. Not a lot of things do. So if you're going to have three kids in the school system, have you guys thought about a bus path?
So the bus companies usually, you know, we, we have, we had to work with the bus company about where they would want to pick up the children.
Cause they're probably not gonna.
On-site or there, I can tell you that the traffic layout, there is another, the circulation, you can get around the building. So a bus can make its way around the entire building. So if the bus company decided that they want to come onsite to collect those children, they could maneuver around the building. If they, if they did not want to, then it would have to be along Main Street, obviously, and.
So if it's along Main Street, do you have a path for the parents to take their kids to the bus stop?
Like a crosswalk, you mean, out there, just a path that they can walk to get out? It would be a human parking lot, it would be a human parking lot. But we can, we can make hashes to, to, to provide like basically a crosswalk area to get out to Main Street and, and where they intend to pick them up. Also sidewalks, there will be sidewalks along the front as well. So as long as we can get them out to Main Street, then they should be able to walk to wherever the bus is going to pick them up.
Okay, and then Trumbull's going to have their own, obviously their own buses and all that kind of stuff. And I'm assuming you guys have a plan for that?
Yeah, well, they would probably go out the same, they would go out the same area. And, and again, the question is whether Trumbull's bus company would want to come onsite, which they're able to do, or if they would pick them up.
And you're positive they're able to come onsite if they want that? Because if you're going to have stores and all that kind of stuff down below, you got to worry about deliveries and, and all.
I just think for maneuverability standpoint, where are the trucks, trucks are able to maneuver around the site and buses of that size will be able to maneuver around, turn a radius wise.
Yeah, they wouldn't have to even go behind the building, they can circle around in the front or parking lot. And we can probably designate an area, we'll, we'll look at designated an area, maybe four of us for pick-up and drop-off onsite.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Happy to do that.
Awesome. Is there an elevator in this?
Yes. Central.
What?
I was just saying, it's in the dead center.
Yeah, there it is. Right here.
And that services both sides, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah, it's that, you can, it's all residents from there, both on Trumbull.
That's your central.
That's central.
Walking in.
By access, there's, yeah, that's the main access lobby. At the end is where the stairwells are. There's no elevators down at the end.
And, cause I don't have the plans in front of me, I'm just assuming you have, there's sprinklers and all this kind of stuff in this facility? The landscape plan looks good. One thing, I actually, it's weird, it's gonna sound weird. But that's just me. I actually liked the look of the building.
That's good.
But it comes with a butt, though. But it kind of looks like a municipal building. If you understand what I'm trying to say? Like.
Which part?
All of it.
Okay.
Now, I'm not expecting you to change it. But it kind of. Now, I'm not expecting you to change it, but it kind of like.
I don't know.
Just from me looking at it when you put up that first, first slide. Huh? Yeah. I don't know, just from me looking at it, I kind of get the feeling it looks like a municipal building. But that's just, that's just my, my opinion.
That's either the mindset or the.
I don't know.
I mean, we tried to do here with the, you know, the difference in materials, obviously, trying to break it up, and then the L shape also, like when you're there.
I mean, I like the look, I do like it, I think it's sharp looking, just, just, people first seeing it may be like, oh, that's not an apartment building, it's something to do with one of the towns or something. You're going to designate areas for electric vehicles as well?
Yes.
You're going to have.
Yeah, it's.
That person right there is the picture, the charging.
Yeah, yeah, actually, right, yeah, I see the charging stations.
Oh, beautiful.
The wiring is Trumbull?
It's the 10% requirements is.
I don't think we were.
Stay, let's stay where we are for today.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
And it's incorporated.
I'm all set.
Buildings we have now.
How many spaces are in Monroe?
Parking spaces?
Yeah.
I mean, that is hard to, it's hard to determine that split. It's, it doesn't matter what town you're in, you will, this whole building will have access to 198.
Now, I got all that, I'm saying our requirements require a certain amount of spaces.
But I think because it's in the same property and under the same ownership, in the same property, I think, I think it's satisfying.
Our regulations allow for that?
And the sharings, they're asking for the commission to recognize the sharing component.
But in our regulations.
So you can, you can require standalone parking or their request is shared parking?
They would have to ask us to, do we end up with?
That, that is a, that has to be a consensus of the commission, the shared parking.
Right, so they don't have the right requirements for what to be?
It's going on the share, it's based on the share.
And we could never split this property. You know, once it develops, there's no way we could ever say, you know, all right, we're going to split the, you know, the Monroe side from the Trumbull side. You know, particularly just for the access to sewers and everything, all those units back, we could never split this property, so there, this development will always have access to the entire 198.
Okay, and then on the, on the retail space, the corner piece is not going to be retail, it's going to be open, because you have stairwell there, you're not going to use that as retail. So there's no retail on that corner piece, right?
No, they're right here, so there's just a break here, maybe it shows it better on the rendering, does the rendering show it better? One second here.
That floor plan shows it.
Yeah, there's a tree in the way here, but there is, if we look at, if we look at the ground floor plan, you'll see right here, this area right here is a pass through. You can walk from the front to the back here.
Right.
But then it, it's not a complete break, because there, you see the second floor, it's our, the next floor, it's, it's filled in, so it's connected here. So that's just a, a pass through. So there's an additional retail space right here that'll front.
Your stairwell in there?
This is the one that fronts towards.
Where's your stairwell at?
The stairwell's right here.
But it's only accessible to the second, third, or not third floor.
That'll lead you to the apartment, that stairwell, that's it.
Okay, so how many square feet of retail do we have?
Bring it down is. In Monroe, it's eight thousand four hundred and thirty square feet. In Trumbull, it's twelve thousand seven hundred eighty-six, so a little over twenty-one thousand. Well, you're not counting the basement, which is another eight thousand. Well, that's just the retail. That counts as commercial space. Right, so that's the retail space and then there's that basement level that is also commercial, which is the office, the storage area. Right there. And then this portion right here is all in Monroe.
Right, so you have two floors of residential, you have two floors of residential, right?
Correct.
And you have one floor of commercial.
Well, there's the one ground floor and then there's this basement floor, just on the Monroe side.
Is that, was that part of what we agreed to do with this?
Yeah, the back.
The back?
No, apartments.
Right, there's no, yeah, no apartments.
No apartments?
Apartments is.
Talking about store apartments.
That would, yeah, that was considered.
I'm just trying to, that all calculates out to sixteen thousand square feet?
Sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five square feet.
The living space in Monroe is what?
Is sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty square feet.
The living space?
Yes.
Did you do, like, with the, with the commercial trucks coming in for these businesses and stuff, did you do any kind of truck turnarounds or any of that, do you have any of that?
Case numbers for the record. Yeah, we, we sized it and then set the radiuses so that.
Do you have plans on that?
I think it's on, yeah.
Do we have it?
On T 2.2 of the civil plans, right now office plans, we show the path of, this is a fire engine coming through. You know, I have to check what, what size truck that is equal to, I think it's a WB-50, but I have to confirm that. Steve, I'm sorry, I have to show you on the screen here. This path here goes around. We show it exiting back out this driveway, but it could, could also, you know, make a turn through one of these aisleways if we needed to.
So what is that, that's a?
That's a fire engine that we showed there. I mean, we can certainly provide different sized vehicles if you please.
No, I just want to make sure that, you know, have you made it through Trumbull with this yet?
Trumbull P and Z?
Yeah.
So we submitted, I think we're hearing this at 3:18.
So you're going to leave this open, because you don't know what's going to happen at Trumbull?
Well, at some point, one town is going to have to be the first one to close, unless you all want to get together, but no. This is going to be left open because of weapons.
Okay. And so on the elevator, it's going to feed all these apartments?
Correct.
So it's going to feed from all floors?
It's going to, it's going to feed the upper residential floors.
So is a requirement for an elevator for 57 units, is that adequate?
Yes, it's only two floors, you know, so there's not, it's not really a high rise, so we anticipate most people will use stairs rather than the elevator. And the elevator will be mainly used for, for moving, and I don't think people, a lot of people are going to be wanting to wait for the elevator, or if they have packages and things like that, they'll, they'll use the elevator, but most people, I think, would just go up one flight of stairs or two flights of stairs, rather than waiting for the elevator.
Now, my concern is because of the EMS, the fire department, because they're all volunteers in our town.
If one elevator is required, it's what's required by the building, they'll do those. And the elevator fits a.
Yes.
As long as it runs. And it fits, it fits a stretcher. So that's per building company and it's, one elevator is only required, but it has to accommodate a stretcher, which is us.
That is all I have for now.
All right. No septic at all being used on the property? And then the affordable housing units, it's 10%, 10% of the property or 10% of each wing? How's that going to work? Could you technically put the 10% all on Trumbull's side and none on Monroe?
No.
No, there, it's, it's 10% of the 57, so 57 require 5.7, so yeah, we are proposing six units, which is 10% of 57, and those will be split between Trumbull and Monroe.
I mean, they could technically, they could put them.
No, Monroe has a 10% thing, they can.
It's for the property, it's, this is a weird case.
But he's got, they got Trumbull and Monroe, so they have to give us 10%.
Are they going to be split equally?
Well, there's, there's six and like. There's one, there's four, four in Trumbull, two in Monroe.
Seventeen is.
So fortunate. Yeah, so fortunate.
It's four, yeah, based on, you know, more of the floor areas and more of the units are in Trumbull.
Is there, besides the storage and the elevator and stairs, main entrance, common area, is there anything like a hangout or anything for the units or a mailroom, what's going on there? So the dead center, you're going, I thought that was what Leon meant, but dead center, there's no business there, right, at the front, at the, in the, in the corner?
It's at the basement.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm in the, here. On Sherman's, right here we have the entrance, there's mailboxes that are going to be here. This area here is going to be a work and exercise room for the tenants, workroom. This area here, we, depending on the tenants, we are thinking of either a community room or a remote working room, which seems to be getting more and more popular with people to have a sort of a room where they can, with counters that they can just work at, you know, getting out of their apartment and go and work remotely from that side.
So many people work remotely now, it's becoming a standard feature.
As apartments. These two areas can be tenants, we anticipate this area combining with the area next door, because it's so small that if this would be one tenant and then maybe a small, you could have a coffee shop or something right here.
With potential internal access, obviously.
We could have internal access right here, if they wanted it, but.
The residential uses from, from the retail.
Yeah, we'd have to be secure and whatever. And then, and then the, and then there's this area out here, which shows better on the rendering, that's kind of an outdoor.
I saw the door.
Estimated outdoor amenity space here, per, you know, seating area out there.
And then the, the second floor or third floor, fourth floor, the units are completely separate, right? There's no two store unit, or two floor units?
Not in Monroe, in, in Trumbull, there are lofts.
I will pull that up right now.
So you see here in this middle section, the, and again, the dividing line between Trumbull and Monroe is, you see this line X1 right here that runs this way, that is the dividing line between Trumbull and Monroe. These, these apartments that you see right here have a loft area. So it's completely open, so it's not like a, like a traditional townhouse. You see here, it says right here, you see the notes, it's open to move up. So those are more loft styles, and there's eight of those.
And then is there a designated resident parking?
So and under your regs, one unit has to be designated, one space has to be designated per unit. So the area that we were anticipating for that would be along the side and maybe some along the rear of the building, that would be designated for residents.
And with the, with the other guest parking, probably not something that needs to be because you have the mixed use?
Yeah.
Oh, the traffic study, how many more trips was estimated? I don't know if I got that exact.
Steve, you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, yeah, sure, let me just, let me just go to my table on that. So total new trips for the site is 84 total during the morning, 157 during the afternoon, and 130 on Saturday, which is table five in the traffic study.
All right.
That's it, thanks.
Commissioner Panici. Can you show me the designated area if there's a fire emergency for the fire trucks to come into?
Well, they have, they have access around the entire building, so wherever they need to get to go, or wherever they need to go, they can get to, correct?
Yeah, they said correct.
So if the fire's in the back, they can get to the back, if the fire's in the front, they can get to the back, wherever they, wherever fire needs to go, we've shown that they're apparatus.
So there's no encumbrances near the building that the truck cannot go to?
No, they can move them in around the entire building. Right up to it.
We have two entrances, you have a main entrance that is able to go, the traffic is able to go both ways?
Well, so here, let's, Jason, you might give the answer that's better, but so this in the center here is a full access driveway, so both in and out, but up here on the north side, that is a right turn exit only, right?
Correct, yes.
So on the main entrance, do you have any way of controlling the traffic by traffic light or anything like that?
Well, and I think Steve was talking about this, he gave it back, I talked about that, but they, they did an analysis, it was an eight hour warrant, right, in, in looking to see if we generate enough traffic to be required or that DOT would want to see a traffic light, and we don't need that, Steve's going to say it better than I did.
Yeah, no, basically what you said is correct, we, we looked at the volume that's proposed to be generated, and this mix of land uses doesn't generate enough traffic over an eight hour period through the day to, to trigger the warrant for a traffic signal that the DOT would require. So it doesn't, it doesn't generate enough to trigger that, so unfortunately, we couldn't, we can't put a traffic signal in at this location to, to help, unfortunately.
Yeah, DOT controls it, I'm sorry.
There's two time, morning traffic and late afternoon traffic going toward Newtown, that the traffic, the traffic backs up in that area quite a bit. So have you taken into consideration that if it backs up, it's going to hinder the traffic coming out of your, your units, not being able to access Main Street?
Well, we, we looked, we looked at our, at our analysis and the, the actual model, we looked at the traffic signal both to the north and south, and based on the calculation for the 95th percentile queue, so 95% out of the time, the, the queuing showed that it, it didn't back up north, heading northbound from Victoria or southbound from the, from Spring Hill from the south. So the, based on our calculations in the future, we don't anticipate the driveway being blocked by queuing from the adjacent signals.
And, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but let me discuss is that basically any commercial development that has an unsignaled driveway is just going to have to deal, it's going to be basically in the same situation because Main Street is Main Street.
Correct. This is like pretty much every commercial or basically any driveway or actually side road. basically any driveway or actually side road where uh, there's, you know, delays exiting, particularly for left turns, especially because of the the heavy through volume and the limited gap, available gaps to make the maneuvers. So it's very typical along this corridor at, you know, other commercial sites to to see e- e- extended delays trying to exit.
I guess the benefit, you know, the benefit we have of this layout is if you are looking ahead north, you have an option here that separates you from the folks that are going to be backed up that are looking to take a left and head south. So we have like, we have an outlet valve essentially for those for those people.
Uh, cor- correct, correct. That actually helps. And also, um, as part of the design, DOT doesn't allow for two lane exits, but we however, we designed the exit lane to be 18 feet wide. Um, so then it could kind of, it can't act as a as a two lane approach, even though it's not striped that way. It could fit two cars side by side. So if there is a car waiting to make a left, uh, there should be enough room for a car who wants to make a right at the main driveway to be able to bypass as well. That's part of the design.
You have to consider that when the light turns red at the turnex, the traffic backs up, and you're not going to be able to either go into the set to the your apartments or come out. So some kind of vehicle should be established that when that light turns red, this traffic back here stops, so it doesn't hinder the entrance or the exit.
That light is set to change, I believe. You might want to check with DOT, but I think they're looking at this. Pretty sure it was just announced, right, that isn't the state going to change that to a vehicle only light that only triggers if there's a vehicle there?
Call that too, Brian.
Think somebody might have just written an article about it.
Is this the Victoria one?
Yeah, I think I think it just got, so you might want to just look into that. It could change things a little bit.
Yeah, uh, cor- correct, and we accounted for that. I apologize for not, uh, part, I I missed that in my presentation. Um, uh, we spoke with Connecticut DOT and when we requested the the traffic signal plans, we asked for, you know, improvements. They are improving the the signal at Victoria. They're they're replacing the current detection with a with a, you know, video detection, which should help to, you know, the traffic signal to function a little bit better. Also, they're doing some minor fine tuning with the the timing in the signal. Um, and then to the signal to the south in Trumbull, um, for Spring Hill as well as Tasha, those two signals work on this together, and those signals are also scheduled for a upgrade in detection. So hopefully with the upgrade in detection, those signals should function a little bit better than they currently are. And we took that into account in our traffic study in our no building bill, those improvements, which are scheduled to be completed, I believe, fall of this year, they should be implemented by. So prior to the opening of this site, it should be implemented.
I like what you did with the curb appeal of the building, so that's very good, very nice. I also, going back to the elevator, I think you might be disservice in yourselves by having one elevator. You might be just a little bit shy with the number of units that you have. Should look into it, maybe having two elevators.
We can certainly look at it again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm curious about the extension of the sewer line. Um, the impact it'll have on the street, the actual project of it, like how how long is the extension, the footage? How long will it take to actually put it in? Like, are you gonna have to dig up a lot of the road? Stuff like that.
Jason Edwards for the record. Um, I don't know. I don't want to give you the wrong number, so I don't know the exact footage of the extension off the top of my head.
Approximate.
Not 1,000 feet, I thought it was 2,000, 2,500. So it's it goes from this site and it runs about 95% of it is in the shoulder. Uh, there is one section where we have to bump out in front of the on 125 on the shoulder. Uh, in front of the Amazon Building, there's some poles and other utilities there that we can't move. So we have to come out into the road for a short stretch, then we come back in, and then it does go down left side of Spring Hill Road and then, you know, ties in. Um, sorry, was there another part of the question?
Yeah, how about how long do you think that will take?
Should, I mean, you have, we have three to four months in total.
Who's covering the cost for that?
That would be the developer at all.
Yeah, man, it's gonna impact traffic a lot. I'm also concerned about the lack of interest or the retail space. You guys, you know, of course, we'll get somebody, but the last thing we want to see is empty stores. I'd like to see some businesses that are interested.
Well, there's there's definitely been interest, but it's just nobody, I mean, we're really kind of, we're waiting for this before somebody is.
We feel that once the building starts getting built, people, it's hard for retailers to look at something a year and a half, two years ahead of times when there's, you know, you're you're not, you're retailers want to open their store. So it's very difficult to, you can get letters of intent, you can get, yes, we sort of, we love the location, we have a lot of interest in it that way. But until they physically see the building getting built, where there's a finite line where they can say, okay, we can have this open by 2025, December 2025, or or December of 2024, you know, something that gives them a target that that's real, I think then that will get much more interest. But we we've had a significant amount of of interest from from a wide variety of retail of people, but nobody signed on that.
Yeah, and they would they would wait for tower approvals. I mean, and again, with this particular site, it's just, there's a lot. It's not just Waltham, P&amp;Z and Trumbull, it's, I mean, Monroe, it's also Trumbull. So there there, I think there, once we have the approvals, uh, or we hopefully have the approvals, I should say, that would hopefully open. And somebody could actually sign an L O I at that point.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I have a letter from the Town and Monroe Conservation and Water Resources Commission that's concerned with two of the plants on your plant list that are considered invasive. Japanese holly and honey locust. Um, do you think there'd be any problems replacing those?
Matt Pop should be on the one. Matt, are you still there?
That Matt Pop landscape architect, uh, we could replace those. That's the first I heard that that Japanese holly was invasive. Um, I don't think it's on any list. I mainly use that just for screening, and there's just a few of them, so we can certainly uh, switch that. And then the the honey locusts, um, it's kind of a native species, mainly a little bit west of here. And and we could certainly switch that species out, so.
Hey, thank you.
I believe.
Uh, I think we have a couple of more commissioners' questions. Go ahead.
I think you said that you want you want to have 100% native plants?
Yeah, that's, it's a, is it 100% native plant, and you can, you know, with these changes?
We could do it. The one other plant that that I would say the two that aren't native was the uh, were plants I was using for screening of the dumpsters and utilities, and that was again, the Japanese holly. Excuse me, and then there's a viburnum, an evergreen viburnum that isn't native, but we could, we could switch those. It gets tough with screening, uh, with using just native plants because there are plants that we could use that are evergreen, but the deer eat those, so we try to use such stuff that are kind of deer resistant too. But we can, you know, maybe around the dumpsters and things, we could use a bayberry, which is a semi evergreen. So we could switch those.
Although native plants are preferred, I never like to see 100% of anything because not all native plants are good, so.
I think that's what Matt's saying is that unfortunately, some of the native plants are susceptible to deer, and so that's why we hadn't selected those, but um, we could take a look at it and see.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think the point is we're, we don't require 100% native, so in this case.
If we think.
Yeah, if it's, you know.
It's adaptable.
And double check on the invasive species, uh, since we discover new ones every time. The conservation committee sent this.
This is the letter. Uh, my question is, where's the sign gonna be?
Where's the sign?
The sign. Um, the monument sign, we're looking at putting it right here.
And that's just for, I was just gonna say, the Gateway Commons?
Yeah, each store will have their own.
Sign out front or within the?
It's on the yellow pages in front of the store, in front of the store.
Nothing down at street level for the?
For the stores?
What else?
No, we're not gonna have a big.
Nothing like that?
Just the monument sign, it says Gateway Commons, and then stores, because they're visible from the street, they'll have the signs on the stores.
Okay, cool. Um, alright, that's it for me.
Do you have another question?
Yeah. Alright, so what what is the address gonna be of this?
The address, that's set by the engineering department, um. Oh, the accessor, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
We are, we are never looking for it to be the same address where both the Trumbull and Monroe.
Can be, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking to have it be the same address in both towns.
So how are we going to decide, since these are apartments? How are we gonna decide what school children go to Trumbull and what school children go to Monroe?
Depending on the apartment area.
Yeah, but how would we know that?
Because.
Unit O? The mailing addresses would be different? If I'm in like unit 7B at the Monroe?
It'd be apartment 2A, and apartment 2A is in Monroe.
So it would be apartment 2A, 74 Main Street, Monroe versus apartment 2B, 74 Main Street, Trumbull?
Yeah, the building is at at an angle because this wall here, you see the the line sort of vibrates, the wall in its center, so you have this wall as your dividing line, the building between Monroe and Trumbull.
Yeah, but the address is the same, it won't matter.
Everything on this side would be Monroe.
The address is not the same because one's in Trumbull and one's in Monroe.
A number might be.
Right, so like, you know, apartment one, apartment one might be in Trumbull, and apartment 10, you know, would be in Monroe, and if the child lives in apartment 10, he would go to Monroe.
But his mailing, that person's mailing address would be Monroe.
Right.
Yeah.
No, the mailing address would be, the mailing address would be the address that they have for the complex, and then it would be an apartment A or B or C or 1 or 2. So how would we know that what school children can come to Monroe and what school children can go to Trumbull? How would the?
Whatever they indicated their residence was, you know, so when they applied into the school system, whatever, whatever.
I'm not saying that, because they could apply for any school system with that address.
But they wouldn't.
What do you mean they wouldn't?
It's a set address.
It's a set, it's a set address, and the health department issues certificates of residence. So they would all have their own CO for like the the.
Yeah, the nomenclature for each apartment is gonna be specific and it'll designate a differentiation. Or if you have maybe everything 201, 202, 203, that's all Monroe, maybe 101. I don't know how you're feeling, but I thought we discussed.
Yeah.
They're gonna be completely different, and that the 200 series will be all Monroe, the 100s will be all Trumbull. So it'll be very.
That would have to be somewhere on your plan.
Yeah, and 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 again, and hon, just made this point, the the building was designed to make sure that that one, that we wouldn't have confusion with that, so where are we going here? Right here. So this apartment right here is completely within Monroe. It's not.
No, I know, I have all that. I'm saying to you.
Designed it so it was on the.
No, I know, I understand that. I'm saying to you is that we would need a breakdown of unit Craig, V, C, D, F, G, or whatever it is, what's in Monroe's side.
Correct.
Right, and then when your tenants would apply for school, they would have to apply that it's in that unit. You understand? So that would have to be somewhere put on this plan, because this is one big complex, and you're it's between two towns. And so, you know, somebody could say, oh, no, my, I live at that address and I'm in the Monroe side, but you wouldn't know what apartment it was unless they told you what it was.
Sure, we could, we could submit a plan that.
Which one has its own mailing address?
We have the numbers.
The other question I had to ask, Mon 1, which town?
We have to know. We go to Trumbull, we go to Trumbull all the time. I mean, I mean, if it's for ambulance and stuff, they're just sad. Police might be a little different, but for for ambulance, they just.
Rosie has the.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Have the, has the fire department looked at these plans? The fire marshal?
Disinformally, Leah, staff tomorrow after the opening of the meeting. I have all these questions that will be directed to police, fire, and the superintendent of schools.
So we'll get a report on that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If we gather this information here, there's no problem.
I'm a plant, if that's a, so like this is unit 209.
No.
And this is unit 211.
Right, but we would have to designate what units is in Trumbull.
Right, we could almost provide a document.
Make a list.
That's fine.
Commissioner May, did you have another question? Before we go to the.
Um. So obviously, online shopping's huge. What are you doing with packages and stuff?
So there. There's mail here, and then we just designate the area for like a package room that where packages are held until people.
Usually piled up in front of the mailboxes in the apartment buildings.
Well, I said.
I'm kind of hoping not to have that here. Gonna have a room though designated. Because I'd hate to see packages just left all over the place or.
Yeah, have them, yeah, have them in the front of retail stores or something like that, yeah.
Alright, yeah, so designate a room for that, that would be really nice. Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna go to the public at this point.
Rob have any question?
Well, here, do you want a second turn? I'm good.
You want round two?
I will, I will.
Chair, can you indulge me for just two minutes, just to run through the standards or criteria for how I I think we sat?
Sure.
I'll I'll be quick, because I know we settled on this. Uh, so regarding your general standards for special exception permits, um, first is regarding the location and size of the use. This application is fully compliant with your regulations, so we believe that it is the appropriate size, and this use is permitted in this zone, uh, so it's the appropriate location for this use. Um, the proposed use is consistent with the plan and conservation development. This property is actually specifically shown on the map, the land, future land use map that you have in your P O C D, and it's marked marked for, and this is on page 65 of your P O C D. Um, it's marked for mixed use commercial residential. This reg was proved that this application is coming under, um, in accordance with the P O C D. Um, the nature and height of the buildings and its relation to the surrounding neighborhood, again, uh, these buildings are compliant with your standards. Um, we've also added a significant amount of landscaping to the site to help, um, uh, buffer the building and the use. Uh, does the operation of proposed use create any objectionable noise, fume, smoke, dust? Uh, we do not believe it does, and regarding lighting, we submitted a lighting plan that is compliant with your regulations. Obviously, we have people living here, so to have those, that, you know, those types of nuisances wouldn't make sense. Uh, the next thing is with regards to whether there's safe sanitary sewage disposal. We've submitted plans and the approval that we received from Trumbull W P C A uh, showing that we have the approvals needed to have a sewer connection. The parking areas, we conform to the parking requirements, um, both in Trumbull and in in Monroe um, with the 198 spaces. That the comments and recommendations of town staff and consultants have been duly considered, that's the next standard. Uh, really, I mean, this this regulation, this design was done in concert with staff and in both towns. So there's, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of comments from them that have been incorporated. So there's, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of comments from them that have been incorporated into this plan. Um. That, uh, the next standard is whether all the appropriate governmental agencies have approved the application. We have received the necessary approvals from Bridgeport W P C A and Trumbull W P C A for sewer. We have received Trumbull inland wetlands approval. And Monroe inland wetlands approval is pending. It will be decided before, uh, this hearing would close. So you would, at that point, have all the necessary, uh, governmental approvals. And, um, whether or not the proposed use will require such additional public facilities or services or create fiscal burden on the town. I think our impact study clearly shows that this will not, uh, put a burden on the town. In fact, it will yield the benefit. And those are your standards, which for special exception permit, which we believe this application fully satisfies. Thank you.
Alright. Are there any members of the public here tonight who would like to speak about this? Speak to the commission regarding this application? If there are, please raise your hand. Any members of the public online tonight? Please raise your hands online. If you have any questions, comments on this application. Once again, any members of the public in person or online that have any comments or questions about this application, this is the time to do so. Seeing none, are there any more comments or questions by the commissioners? Or by staff? If not, go back to you, Mr. Russo. We do need to keep this open.
So in light of it being kept open, there's also some information that I know the commission's requested tonight that we should come back by, uh, regarding at the school children analysis, the sidewalk out to, um, or the access out to Main Street. For our children, how they get to, uh, a bus stop and the other comments that we received tonight. So we will work on my responses.
And we will reconvene this on February third. Thank you. Next on the agenda is, um, other business pending minute meeting, meeting minutes. I think we all have two meeting minutes before us. November the third and November the seventeenth. Cheryl, attend a motion to accept the minutes of November third, twenty twenty two. Need a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes.
November third, I need a second. I got, I need discussion. Minutes. Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the November minutes? Aye.
Aye.
They oppose? Demanded this. Have the pending meeting minutes from November the seventeenth, twenty twenty two before us. Cheryl will accept a nomination.
I'll make a motion to approve. Minutes.
To approve. Eight seconds, please. Seven and a second. All those in favor, they aye. Oppose? Guys have it. Minutes have been.
We didn't approve January yet. We just did November.
Thank you.
No, just did June.
What? Oh, it was November.
November third and November the seventeenth.
Yeah, we also have December first and January fifth.
You doing those?
With us? One of us?
No, I don't have all of them.
They're on my hands. I got them.
Wait, hold on.
They're not on the agenda.
Oh, alright.
I will hold then. Next, we have a commissioner report. I have no reports. Any of the commissioners have any reports? No. Alright, no commissioner reports. Land use staff report. I know we have one. Have it before us as well. We, we have Cheryl's first report. Alright.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So Cheryl Valerie Staff, um.
Hey, Cheryl's report.
So, uh, I'll try to keep it brief, obviously. Um, basically Old Zor Road number three, um, got a complaint, um, about blight and unregistered vehicles. Um, I pulled an old file and this goes back to like two thousand eleven. Hasn't been resolved. So, um, basically I issued, um, a zoning violation notice and, um, a town code for blight uh, notice of violation as well. Um, I've talked to the owner, he's it's hard for him to take care of this matter.
What is the address?
It's three Old Zor Road. I don't, I don't know if you have a copy of.
Yeah, well, yeah, Stevenson Lumber.
Right, so, um, he's got like five unregistered, uh, vehicles that need to be removed from the property. He said he'd do that. It's just taking him a little while. Um, as far as the blight goes, he has actually made a little bit, a little bit of progress. So he's getting there. So I'm, I'm working with him on that. Um, I do have pictures here to show you, but I haven't made copies. So I could email them to you. I could just pass them down.
Pass them down.
You wanna see?
Pass them down.
Okay.
We'll send them back.
This is a set. They're all a little different. So you could pass them down to each other. Um, just showing the most recent going back. Um, they're all dated. So you can pass them down. Um, it, it shows you the progression from the most recent going back. Um, and that's just to December, but there are pictures going back to two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. It's kind of the same stuff. The air photographs really haven't changed that much. So blight's being taken care of very slowly. It's, I don't, I think it's very difficult, um.
Difficult or what's the?
Is the other one?
Yes. Yes, and yeah, so there's trying to be patient, but it's definitely, it's definitely a, a a, a violation that needs to be taken care of and it's been outstanding for a very long time. So just letting you know about that. Guess I have any questions or concerns that I can pass on or anything regarding that?
Well, what's the next step?
I mean, the step zoning wise is just a citation and then he, we have a citation officer and we start to find him daily. And get legal, and get legal involved is, is the next step. And I, I'm hoping it doesn't happen, but we'll see. I'm not gonna wait a long time.
She didn't make comment. I think you gotta give me back.
Um, as I'm supposed to.
Is there water, water on the Old Zor property? Or is that?
For what? Um, I was looking at it from a zoning standpoint. Um, I don't think there's any filling going on. I think it's just a lot of stuff. And I didn't get a complaint about wetlands, so that wasn't something that I, I pursued.
It's, it's just a picture, I think. It doesn't look like water, but maybe it's concrete or.
There, there may be, there may be wetlands on the property. It's not, it's not something that I got to complain about, so I wasn't focusing on that particularly. Um, right. Okay, um, so then the next one's pretty, uh, pretty benign, but seventy eight Far Horizon Drive. Uh, we got a complaint about a commercial truck being parked along the road. Um, I sent a request for voluntary compliance and I talked to the owner who doesn't live there. Um, his, one of his siblings does and he's working on having that car, that truck removed. He wants to do it and he's working. I'm supposed to re-inspect on the twenty seventh and hoping that will be closed and go away. Um, the next one is twenty four Longview. So if you wouldn't mind, I'm so sorry, if you wouldn't just pass those down. Um, basically, I got a complaint about a commercial equipment and an unregistered vehicle. And I sent a notice of violation based on that. Um, he plated the vehicle, um, that was unregistered and so that that, that part of it's not really an issue anymore. Um, he had like a, a kind of a cherry picker. I can't really describe what it was. I have pictures of it. But that was removed. In its place is a what he describes and doesn't want to move, that is a, he calls a residential backhoe.
That's, that's her.
Yes, that's, that's the, the equipment in question. And he says it's a residential backhoe and this is not something that he really wants to move and tends to move and thinks he has a right to have it there. Um, I put a copy of Article three, um, point one, three, C, seven and eight attached to this paper, just talking about what we, um, say is allowed and not allowed on a residential property. And maybe this is something we might clarify at subcommittee, but, um, you know, I don't know if you want to open the door to allowing, um, commercial equipment, small or large, on a residential property. So this is something that I said, okay, you don't want to take it off your property? Seen the commission really soon and we'll have a chat. So you guys let me know your thoughts.
Was there a complaint on this?
There was a complaint, not on thi- on this. It was commercial equipment. So he removed that and then put this there in the, in the place of it. So I went to inspect, hoping it was resolved and.
You can't plug it behind a barn?
Wouldn't have seen it.
That's what I'm saying. He doesn't.
Well, maybe, you know.
It's kind of small. There's a tractor trailer on one eleven across the street from Masick High School parked there.
That's a big deal.
Okay.
It's little.
Okay, do you want me to?
Right on one eleven, right as you. That's not like a. Clear as day.
Said it's across from Masick High School?
Yeah, right on one eleven. Tractor trailer. I see it every morning when I drop off my son. Can't miss it. From the side of the driveway. It's a big one.
So I don't know if you want to tell me what your thoughts are now or take it to subcommittee. I'm not sure how you want to handle it, but I wanted to let you know about it right away.
Which one?
What, this tractor?
This fa- this residential backhoe.
Yeah, I think that this is, this meets like, this is like, it's a small backhoe.
That is a really small backhoe.
It's not a commercial backhoe.
So you're, you are okay with?
With that because there's, there's, there's other tractors and machines that you can buy a little backhoe to hook them up to it. And so you can get a small John Deere and you can hook whatever.
So you, you, you guys are.
I don't have a problem with that backhoe.
Good.
But where do we have a problem? At what size?
Well, I'm saying, if you, if you had a huge commercial backhoe.
I get it.
It's like, you know what I mean, so. Well, we have to, then we'll have to put a weight on it.
Yeah, maybe you want to go by weight on it?
Probably would have to go by weight tons. We'll go with what a commercial backhoe is and what like a, a regular homeowner's tractor, fifty, fifty horse tractor or whatever it is.
But I would also be concerned if you had that plus three or four or five other things that are, you know, I just.
No, I understand.
From an enforcement standpoint, I'm always thinking like three steps ahead. So that, that's fine and I can let him know that it's resolved. This might be something that, you know, okay. So we're done with that. So.
Get a weight on it. Can you get a weight on this?
I can ask them.
Or a model number and we could find.
I can try, I can try to. I will ask him.
Explain, explain.
So you want to make a model so I can find out the weight? That's, that's what you're asking, right?
Yeah, we could figure that out.
Yeah, that's not, that's not commercial.
That's what I'm saying. It looks like a, it's like a ride on Loma with an attachment.
Think I bought that for my son when he was five.
Okay, that's cool. Um, the next one on the list is two thirty six Roosevelt. I'm not sure if you want to just not.
Yeah, I, I took this, uh, matter up. It's the, uh, temporary sign out in front of, uh, Lakeside Liquor Store. It exceeds the, uh, uh, A frame sign dimension, which is three by three.
But he also has a neighbor that keeps parking a truck in front of it too.
That, that has stopped.
Finally? So then he needs to, I'll talk to Anthony about that, get the sign swiped.
Yeah, I've been talking to Anthony, uh, for quite a while. He's ready to come in for a permanent sign.
Yeah.
And that will help.
Oh, he needs one.
He doesn't have a permanent sign. Thank you, Bruno.
Uh, last one, three fifty nine Spring Hill Road. I'm not sure how many of you guys are familiar with this property, but it's S P C A. It's, they have animals. You know, uh.
Big problem.
Uh, it goes back, I think to twenty thirteen, maybe before that. Um, I just inspected on the ninth. Um, they were in compliance as far as the dogs. They had mini cats. We're still trying to work with them. I'm in, in trying to begin con- contact with our corporation counsel and animal control. I'm in contact with them and they're probably going to be taking legal action very soon. So.
So they're, they're not in compliance with the animals, are they?
Well, they, they are with the dogs. But, um, cats, I'm not really sure if that was really part of the.
So you, they let you inspect the whole property?
I, I, I inspected it. We knew they had, we know they have cats and I counted the amount of dogs with the animal control officer. But they had cats there in the building and I'm not, I'm trying to talk to our legal counsel to figure out if there was a cat component that I can't, I can't find in the file. Um, and then.
How many dogs are there?
Right now? Well, when I inspected on the ninth, there were twenty one.
But at one time it was.
There were more than allowed. Twenty five is the allowed.
I, I think one time.
That were there, right. So, um, animal control is.
ongoing problem over there.
Yes, and we're, I'm trying to resolve it as much as possible, but it's definitely a slow process. But I wanted to just get, let you guys know with the the new statuses. So the only one to look into is, um, the one eleven across from Masick High School tractor trailer. Anything else that you guys have a concern with?
Do you notice that two?
violations?
The garage going up?
That's a necessary, I, I meant to call you back, Mike. In back of, uh, Noble Gap.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's residential. That's a
So that's.
Necessary structure. That's in full compliance.
Oh, it is?
Confirm it was taken.
It's definitely not fifty feet tall.
That they were gonna see Panera from their yard. So now they fill this massive thing like, oh.
Okay, that's great.
And, uh, just a reminder, uh, zoning regulation, subcommittee, we changed it from the twenty third to the thirtieth.
Thirtieth?
Uh, we have a long agenda. And, uh, plan on, uh, an hour and a half to do.
So who will what?
We have a lot.
Do we get paid?
Rick is two pizza.
How many?
Uh, fourteen slices.
Each.
Alright.
Oh, seriously, if you want me there for two hours, you gotta pay me.
I'll bring us some pizza.
That's thirtieth, right?
I'll, I'll write it in my calendar and I still will forget.
It's five thirty, right?
Five thirty.
On the thirtieth.
It's a Monday?
Yeah, Monday.
Thirty.
And beer.
Okay, Cheryl, I can motion adjourn.
Hold on, hold on. I got a question to ask.
Yes.
Spring Hill deal. Like that came back over here. Well, how did that deal end up? Cause I went and read the town council stuff. And how did that come about? That where the property owner wasn't notified?
No, the property owner was.
But the property owner, they knew that property owners were late.
No, no, it's the, 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 it's the listing, Leah, on the grand list. It's the parents deceased.
I understand.
They met the letter.
No, I just want, I just want to clarify. It's just so that I know because I had questions about in, at the meeting and then I want to know. So if they're late, you don't go to like probate and look for probate?
No, the state statute's very clear for abandonment of roads. You take so name off of the grand list.
I think the band of road was abandoned, right? The reason the road was abandoned was because the, the first selectmen used that. The fire department don't use it. And the police department don't use it.
All of those recommendations were made.
Yeah, that's not the reason.
Fire and.
Comes after. There was a request.
That guy gave.
No, I have all that, but I'm saying to you is that.
Town road.
No, fool into that house.
Uh, yeah.
The deceased period.
There's some, some backstory there too, right?
No, you. Have to record in the landmark.
Give those, that comes after.
Convenes. That is then picked up by the accessories. It's a step that was missed.
Yeah.
And the town council's process met the letter of the law, which says what is on the